Might be something we can put back in. Um, if, big if, if we get, uh, you know, if we're able to. Um, but I, I, I don't know, I'm just a little, so I can't, I'm not, I can't say that I today fully support cutting our sports and activities, which would include the dome. I would leave it up to the administration to advise us on, um, that whole attrition. You know, I know when people leave and we not feel their position, we do gain some, we don't gain because we lose, because we lose staff, but financially, um, you know, we, we, we're able to realize a savings, uh, though temporary. So I'd want to know, uh, you know, what does that mean if we reduce, uh, district administration? Uh, and, and like with the delay in the curriculum purchases, I think the one-to-one device purchases, we can delay it, not get rid of it, but delay it to a future point in time when we can, uh, pick that up and, and make sure that, uh, you know, we continue with that. Uh, and I don't know, do, what is the estimate for, um, filling unfilled positions? I mean, do we have, what is that amount? I know I've, I've seen it, do we know?
Um, so for the current year, we're estimating about forty-four million dollars of our salaries and benefits going unspent.
Unspent.
Right, and then in our pro forma budget projection, which calculated out the ninety-eight million, I think we had about thirty-six million in, uh, total attrition for there. So, I mean, we could increase that number a little bit, and it's just, uh, how much risk are you willing to take in the event that, uh, these positions start getting filled more?
Right, okay, thank you. And what would be the impact of a hiring delay this time of year?
Um, so right now, we wouldn't, typically when we put in hiring delays, we've exempted like special education, classroom teachers, and those really hard to fill positions that continually turn over. Um, but in that sense, it would be, you know, two weeks or a month, we don't post the job, so no one really is being delayed in actually getting hired for prospective candidates. But it would be, you know, the work just doesn't get done or gets passed off to other people for two weeks or another month.
I think I asked a question, uh, maybe a couple of work sessions ago regarding Ignite and how we were ma-managing to do the, the testing or the, um, because to me, I think we were, we were using teachers to do the testing. It, do we have to use teachers to do the testing? I'm just trying to figure out how we are, you know, so if, so, you know, I get sometimes we can do things different. How short of cutting Ignite, are there any ways to do that differently? Same with immersion, can we do something different? That's my question.
So, we're, you know, we've tasked te-teaching and learning to look at what could Ignite be looked at reimagined, um, because we'd want to make sure that our higher kids get services and those gifted kids get some services. And so we're looking into what that could be reimagined as, um, without having to do the pullouts and, and have the, the, the actual classes for the Ignite classes be a different, so we're looking maybe at win time, providing those extra, um, supports for the, our higher level kids in those. Um, I guess I am having a hard time wondering the testing piece, which part are you talking about? Because we, we, we're doing, we're utilizing Ignite teachers for testing for, um, our actual testing teams earlier this year because we just don't have-
But we pulled them out from their school to do that.
Yes, we've had to do that because we just have, we have, we don't have bodies to be able to go out and do those.
Right, and so we would continue to-
We'd have to reimagine what that looks like too if we were to do that.
So, you know, I think it, it just seems to me that, uh, we've already kind of reimagined how we're doing Ignite, and so I don't know that it needs to be on the list. Neither do I think, um, and maybe it does. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what that, I, I don't know, I mean, I don't have the, the figures in my head. But I know last year we had a huge discussion on Ignite, and, and the year before, we in that, we reimagined it, what it could look like. Um, so I, I just think that perhaps we've, there are other things on the list that maybe we could do, uh, some more reimagining on as, instead of going back to the same programs every single year.
Sure, Madam President, if I may, so we did have discussions last budget cycle around Ignite, and we did propose reimagining Ignite and what that would look like, would be thinking about our MTSS structure, some of the adjustments to win that we just described, but ultimately the Ignite program was maintained. And one of the reasons why it continues to be discussed is that it is an investment of, of, I believe, at least two million dollars, um, and does not support all the students in the district, and while it does add incredible value to the district, we're, um, trying to grapple with, uh, addressing, uh, a very large deficit, and we need to figure out ways to protect nurses and PTR above all, based on what I'm hearing from board members. And, um, unfortunately, some of our programs only serve a small proportion of the students, given the cost per student investment is why we're having the conversation.
Okay, and my, my last clarification has to do with, uh, the device purchases. I know that we are, we have been, we've been moving to a remote, to remote learning. How is this going to impact our ability to continue to do that?
So, uh, right now, what we'll do is we'll just delay some of those purchases, and that means that, um, the bubbles in the system, like, we bought a whole bunch of Chromebooks during, uh, the pandemic, and so that created a really large bubble in the system of about thirty thousand devices when you look at it. And so, over time, we'll have to replace those, and we like to try to replace those at a percentage rate of fifteen percent or so per year. So we'll delay that fifteen percent, and then we'll look to fund that fifteen percent as a block later on, if that makes sense.
Okay, you're done. All right, um, so I'm gonna stop there and let someone else. You ready, Member Higgins?
Why not?
Okay.
I, um, I appreciate the kind of summary here that's put together. Um, in regards to the do not touch area, the K through three, I'm, I mean, I've seen the reports from National School Board Association with some issues and how it affected the outcomes in those grades. Uh, in fact, their analysis said that low classroom sizes K through three has about ninety percent of the effectiveness of low grade, low classroom sizes in all the grades. So it's just real critical for reading and for getting it ready, I, I like that. When it comes to the areas not to be touched, I don't know about school security, I don't know how many schools, school, school people we have versus SROs, versus anything else. I look for the administration, I don't want to cut anything that's going to create a safety issue though, and that's probably not that much there, and I, and it being off the table is fine by me, but within it. Um, I, uh, the district fund going to five percent, I don't agree with, that's going too low. I don't mind if we, if we have to project what we're gonna have in salary savings, even though it may not happen, uh, you know, it's always a possibility, but if we, if going down to five percentage because we expect a lot more salary savings, I'd rather show it as salary savings, uh, that we can't fill the jobs, what the problems are, let's let the public see the impact of what we have for funding and how it's affecting our ability to fill jobs. I mean, that's, that's probably a good statement because it's, it's valid, I think it's an important issue. When it comes to the grade, uh, the, uh, pupil teacher ratio, when they talk about four through twelve, I just want to emphasize, when you cut a position, a teacher's job, you cut what they teach. So we're gonna be impacting the types of curriculums, the different choices. When you start shrinking it down, you're gonna keep a math and science teacher, you're gonna keep reading, you're gonna, but you've got other classes out there, it's gonna impact our other activities, and so, um, and I'm sure that's gonna have a difference impact. It can affect group technology, it can affect a lot of things when we keep cutting that type of approach. The one thing on here that does jump out a little bit of a concern to me is looking at, uh, delaying curriculum. Uh, I want anything dealing with, with academic outcomes, uh, and I think, yeah, delay curriculum purchases, that's a concern to me. Uh, if this is, we know that curriculum ties into academic outcomes, there's things that need to be done, I appreciate the superintendent's goal to do that, but delaying that, um, picking that for something to be delayed right now has an impact after that. And, uh, I just, curriculum issues is tied directly with academic outcomes, if it's tied in directly with student success, that's a concern to me, so that would be an issue I'd look at. I don't know how we're gonna cut back replacing, um, electronic stuff and, and still be able to help the kids if there's issues with it or ties in. We can't let kids that, um, can't afford it or the issues out there not to have it, but it's a relatively small number compared to the massive number we're dealing with. The only way to get the real numbers we got is, is PTR is gonna be the big thing. My only disagreement on here, I, I'm tired of hearing it, and I just have strong objections to it, to say, oh, you can't cut administration because it's gonna put costs someplace else. There are some issues in administration always, just like there are in every case, and to say we should be exempt because we have to pass it on to the schools is not a valid statement, I don't believe, and I think I can support that. So I want to leave everything on there open, uh, for possible savings, and then when we look at the savings, then we look and see whether or not it would have an adverse impact in some other areas, rather than exempting it before we even start the process. That, uh, is something I would disagree with. I, um, in the past, I can tell you, uh, you went back ten years ago, we would have a two or three day session where we'd have different departments come through, give a presentation, what's going on with the schools, what's going on with it, and then we'd feel more connected with it, and it would be supportive of what we're trying to get done. We've never done that here in the last two years, I don't think the board gets a good indication of what that budget is all about. Um, and I think that could be a real benefit to do something like that, a real educational opportunity, because then the public gets a chance to hear it as well. So, uh, I appreciate the document that was prepared, uh, I think it captures a lot of the issues that we had in our discussion, and it was an important discussion that we had, so appreciate the document, thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Who's next? Member Holloman.
Um, I would agree with Member Wilson in that we need this year to look at things that can be restored. Um, and the, the perspective is that we've been shaving programs, um, for years, in that we've tried not to cut programs, but we've tried to cut them back a little. And I suspect if we talk to any of our directors, any of our principals, they can describe to us where they used to have more staff doing any number of jobs, um, that, you know, our registrars used to always be in independent position, that's what they did, and it's been blended into other positions in the schools, uh, departments at this building that used to have more, uh, administrative support or assistant directors now have fewer. And when we look at the programs in the schools themselves, uh, they, they're not staffed at the same level, and so I, I feel like the way the administration presented our options to us kind of reflected that, in that we, we can't look at, say, activities and say, well, we want you to cut it by ten percent. We really are gonna have to say what we don't want to do. It's not a case of being able to find something that's a little bit of a cushion, that would be nice to have but not essential, that we're at the point where, if, in most of these situations, if we cut a person, we are dismantling a program or, or eliminating the ability to do it well. The, the second problem I see from that is that the district employees are not asleep, and when they see a program get shaved too much, or they see something go up for consideration, that's not anything you ever want to put your future into. I suspect there are talented teachers that would not consider going into, say, the Ignite program because they've seen it be on the bubble so many times. It, it comes up almost every time we have to cut the budget, so why would you put your professional future into that program and establish yourself and start to do great things, only to find out you're gonna be at some other school next year in a regular classroom? Um, it really has a detrimental effect to everything we're doing. So I, I hope, without a whole lot of confidence, that the legislature will do something, and that they'll push it past the governor, but I'm not totally optimistic. And I think if they don't, the next year, we really are going to have to look at things like activities, and the question is, do we eliminate somebody's favorite sport, or do we eliminate all of them?
Yeah.
Because at some point, there's a level of fairness in there. I don't, I've never been a hockey player, it's not my favorite game, but I would, I, I can't say that we should eliminate hockey, but keep basketball, or keep baseball, or keep the other programs. I, I think at some point, as a district, because this has been going on for so many years, we have to be willing to say to the public, we just can't do these things anymore. And we do have to put our money into what we call our goals, even though I think most people recognize all these other activities and clubs and special programs are ways of keeping, um, some students that are marginalized engaged with the school and, and in school, um, we'll lose them. I mean, just absolutely, there are any number of football players that are gonna be good students and graduate, but there are a handful of them that are gonna stop coming to school. Can't say exactly which ones they are, but they want to play football enough that they're willing to come to school and make seeds so that they can do it. Um, all of our, all of our extracurriculars are like that. They, certainly, we have students who participate in them, they're gonna be great students anyway, but in every case, we have students that are there for that activity. Either it's their friends, it's the camaraderie of being on a team, it's the travel, it's something about it that catches them, and that's the main reason they bother putting up with us otherwise. Um, this budget's gonna be painful to get through, but I also think we have a responsibility to start saying to the public in February, this is what the year after looks like if we go through another flat-funded budget proposal, that, that we're going to begin to cut things that I don't think anyone in Anchorage ever envisioned us cutting. And it, it may be some people's goals in the legislature that we dismantle public education to the point that other alternatives come in, but the larger public needs to understand that, that people that are doing that are being successful, that they have flat-funded it long enough that from year to year, we cannot continue to operate the same district we did last year. And the, the district we operated last year wasn't quite the same as the year before that, and it wasn't quite the same the year before that. Um, people will always be able to pick out some mistakes and errors and some waste in a large organization, a certain amount of that just exists, people do make mistakes and, um, they estimate wrong and, and things happen. But by and large, I think this district runs about as lean as an organization of this size can. Um, and in some cases, I think it's rather remarkable results out of really small staffing. People love the job, people love working in the buildings, people love working next to students, they'll put up with an awful lot to do it, up to a point, and I think we've reached that point, I think we're pushing past it. Um, as we put these programs up for review and possible elimination over and over again, people won't staff them, good people won't staff them, the quality deteriorates, it becomes that much easier to eliminate them. But I do think we need to keep in front of us that we are unwillingly participating in the dismantling of the Anchorage School District bit by bit as each year progresses. So, again, I urge the administration to look for things that we can roll back if we succeed in convincing a legislature to do something. If we don't succeed, I'm not sure it really matters that much anymore.
Thank you, sir. Um, Member Wilson? And then we'll go to Member Dunley.
This is always so extremely difficult. I will, looking at the list, I, I will agree with, um, the items that the administration put on here that were non-negotiables, or, or what they perceived based on our, our session were non-negotiables, I, I will agree with each of those. Our middle school model, the collaboration time, it, to me, it's extremely important that we support our middle schools in bringing in our sixth graders and support our sixth graders to transition into those middle schools. The sports and activities, I, I will agree with what I've heard. They, they both keep kids in school, and many of our kids, it keeps them in school, but for many of the kids that would be successful in school, it pushes them to be even more successful. It really, really does. We have coaches that, um, I know many of them, that provide after-school tutoring for their students, that really focus on wanting to make sure their students are not just reaching the minimum, but becoming, um, very successful, not acad, not just academically, but very successful, well-rounded individuals. And so there's so much more to our sports and activities than just having students participating in something, they're learning so many of those, uh, job skills that they'll, they'll take with them into the future. Uh, I have, I, I've raised athletes, I've raised, um, many, many kids in my home as a foster parent, some of them, there, there's just, if, if it's not sports, it's activities, it's something that's keeping them in school and something, and many people that, um, many community members that come together to help them be successful. And I, I just want to throw out there, the dome rental, I actually went to the dome last, it was about January or February last year, I remember. There was students running tracks, students playing soccer, students playing baseball, all at the same time. So there was a lot of students using that facility, uh, that would not have the opportunity, and if you look outside, I mean, it, we have snow until as late as May, and so I have a difficult time saying the dome rental needs to go away and we have other opportunities for students to participate in their activities otherwise. Um, I talked to a nurse today who said, she said, you know, I, I've been with the district a very long time, so I'm, I'm not worried about myself, but I'm worried about our new nurses, um, that are starting out, because they're reaching out to her concerned about these conversations that we're having. And her response, summarizing, but her response was to them was that they're, they, they're gonna hear this every year, they're gonna hear this conversation every year, and they should really sadly get used to it. Um, and that's, that's heartbreaking, that our staff has to get used to hearing the conversation about what program is supposed to be possibly cut, what FTEs are, are not gonna happen for their school, what, it just, it's, it's, it's really brutal to sit here and know that. Um, and although I, I, I have great hope that the, that we will receive additional state funding for our schools, um, what we have to work with right now is the reality of, of what we have in front of us. Um, I do support the decrease of five percent in our district fund balance, and in part because, I, I hate to say it, but it's almost like, do you, do you keep a little bit of money in your savings account and not put food on the table, or do you spend the money that you have in that savings account to put food on the table for that day? And that's what, that's what it really feels like. Um, I do have a, a couple of questions, the reduction in supply allocations, can you provide me with a little bit, um, of some examples, information about that?
Can I just, uh, get a motion to extend by ten minutes? Because, uh, we're gonna run over.
Yeah, we, we missed. So, Madam President, I think we talked about this before, I don't think we need to motion to extend our work session.
Our work session, okay, so we will just continue until we're done, thank you.
Thank you. For the supplies, um, the proposal that we had on that Saturday was about a fifteen percent reduction across, uh, most departments and schools, so that would cut into the amount that schools have for paper, pencils, uh, refreshing computers if they need it in some instances, um, and then departments, the same thing, it would be just kind of those general supplies. Um, we did, on that calculation, exempt, uh, some maintenance supplies for fixing buildings, uh, IT, which would have encompassed the one-to-one things also, and some of the curriculum things that we talked about. But, uh, for the schools, that was kind of predicated on about a fifteen percent reduction in their, their allocation.
Oh, thank you for that. Um, I would like to say that I, 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 I hear from other members, Member Wilson, I actually think everybody who's spoken, um, up to this point, that I, I would love to prioritize things that we can bring back, we received that additional funding. Um, and I did have one other question. So, the question would be, the proposal on here about the nurses, librarians at smaller schools, um, can you help me understand what a smaller school looks like versus an average or larger-sized school?
So I think the idea on that would be to look at, um, smaller schools that are also in somewhat proximity to someone who may have a nurse, but really, there are gonna be some issues with that, um, as we try to identify schools, as we couldn't really target Title I schools, you know, as we saw with school closures, when you see those, uh, populated, lower populated schools that are in close proximity, by and large, they were Title I schools. So if we were to cut nurses just out of them, you'd have Title I comparability issues. Um, so we'd really have to do a little bit deeper dive into what that might, or which schools those might mean, but, um, but the idea would be to use that as a tool to limit the increases in the pupil teacher ratio, essentially.
And, and I would like, for the record, to say that I, I don't support, um, decreasing the amount of nurses and librarians that we have in our schools. Our nurses have so many functions, um, other than medical, they're, they really are some of the additional mental health, um, assistance for our students in the schools, and, and we all know that, that we need as much of that support as we can get, and our librarians have such an amazing function for each of our schools. Um, so I think I'll move on to the next person, thank you.
Thank you, Member Wilson. Uh, Member Dunley?
Yeah, I support, uh, having the, preventing an increase in K through three class sizes. Um, I think that's, uh, important to reading success, which is our top priority, and I actually moved a budget amendment for this current year to prevent an increase in K through three class sizes by increasing, uh, the reduction of administration. So I'm glad that's on the list this year of not being one of our options. Um, I am glad that school security, that's another super high priority, is on the not to look to cut list. I support a reduction in the district fund balance because I think it's, um, too large right now, my, may, I'm not even certain it complies with the state requirements to limit that. And I also think the fund balance is gonna be replenished if the employment situation continues and we're unable to fully utilize the funds that we approve for salaries. So I, I believe some of that's gonna get replenished over the, uh, not this, well, you, not, it will be this current year also, um, but also next year. Um, so I think it'll get re, re, reimbursed or replenished in some degree. And, um, I continue to support, uh, moving the middle school model, which is over three million dollars, down to the potential area of budget reductions.
Okay, thank you. Any other final follow-ups or questions? Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Regarding the dome rental, you know, we're paying two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for four weeks of use. If, if that expense were eliminated, would we be able to shift, um, that time that our students would need an alternate facility? Would we, uh, miss, would students miss out on four weeks of activities and sport usage? What would that look like?
So, as far as the dome rental goes, it is four weeks of activity. We already pay a group to come in and snow blow all of our fields and tracks now, we never did that before, and so we're on those tracks in the field sooner than we've ever been. And additionally, there isn't any other school district in the state that has a dome, right? We're, we're the only school district that has that dome, so we, we don't, you know, there's gonna be some, maybe a little later start to some, like, track and field and soccer, but, uh, that, as far as a budget cut goes, that was just one that we put out there.
Thank you, Madam President.
Could I follow up really quick?
Yes, you may.
So that tracks with my understanding, too. And it occurred to me that districts in, you know, Fairbanks, for instance, has a harsher climate than Anchorage and makes do without the facility. And I don't think, obviously, I think we're in unanimous agreement that all these items here have value, and I would propose that we consider restoring that item if and when, you know, funds are given from the legislature, because clearly, it's been a benefit to students. But I would rather utilize those funds to support nurses and librarians, for instance, and avoid reductions there. The other item I was hoping we could get, because it's not listed here, get consensus on, is to incorporate, when we said general fund travel, ask that we lump the board funding for travel, and I think it's between $30,000 and $40,000 versus $400,000 to $500,000 for general fund. So I would ask consensus from the board to group those two things together when we're talking about general fund travel.
Thank you. So how much are we saving? I mean, how much does it cost for these non-negotiables that are identified in the memo? Do we know? Just those two or six items? Do we have a figure?
Mr. Atliff, do you have an estimate?
I don't have an estimate offhand off the PTR increase. I can probably pull that up. The middle school model is about three point-
And that would be by one, right?
For K3, it really depends on what the metric changed. So that's kind of why it's-
Oh, okay, okay.
Whether it's one, two, or three. The middle school model for the collaboration time was about $3.8 million. Sports and activities, the net cost to that is about $5 million to the district. The counselors were, I think, around $125,000 or $130,000 per person. So depending on how many you chose to reduce, that's how much they would be each. School security is less, that's about $77,000 or $80,000 per FTE. And then credit recovery was, is that a million? Yeah.
So school security, how many positions is that? Is that every security person in every school?
Well, no. We don't think we would reasonably want to do that.
Not every school, a secondary school?
Yeah, they're all at middle and high schools.
Yeah. So we already have people in those positions, is that correct?
Yes.
Are there vacancies that we are unable to fill?
Very few, probably.
Any other questions? Member Lessons?
Yeah, I mean, a reflection and ask for some point in the future. I alluded to this at our Saturday work session. There's a document, a tool, from the Edgonomics Lab called the Grid. And you can Google it. And it allows boards and administrations to make really granular decisions. You sort of have to fill in the blank, choose your own adventure, but it makes you think about an approach to investments or cuts on a per-pupil basis. And when you look at the cost of something at a per-pupil basis, you can also think about, what is the impact? Is it high? Is it medium? Is it low? I don't sense that this board has granular information on the per-pupil costs for many of the things that we're entertaining. You know, we, last year, we certainly heard about the per-pupil costs of various sports. I think that that would be an asset for future conversations so we can understand, how much are we investing at a per-pupil basis for a middle school math class? I don't know. How much are we investing on a per-pupil basis for the middle school model? How much are we investing on a per-pupil basis for maintaining our K3 class sizes? I just think that having that granular information would allow us to make better decisions in a time of absolute austerity. I can say that, you know, my values are extended to this, I'm trying to extend my values to this process as much as I can, but at a certain point, I feel like I had to leave my values at the door and come with a red line and just cut away at things. And I'm really functioning, and I'll say it again, out of response to the 2007 ruling by Judge Gleason in Morvey, Alaska. And I think that we need to absolutely make a case that at this time, our funding is not adequate. In 2007-
It wasn't adequate.
That wasn't what the judge found. But at this time, we may be showing through our choices that the funding that we are receiving is inadequate. And that is why, I don't know, having that data would be really helpful. But again, I do hope that we walk away with a multi-tiered approach to this and saying, hey, we can reverse nearly $25 million cuts on day one of the legislative session if there's a veto override. Sounds pretty good to me.
Hey, any other comments, questions from board members? Yes, Member Jacobs?
Yeah, Madam President, just to put a point on my request earlier, I haven't heard any board member speak against combining the two Travel Line items. Can we-
Oh, yeah.
We have consensus, then we're giving it to administration?
I mean, I agree with that.
Okay.
Does anyone, I mean, I don't know if anybody else, I mean, we can live without traveling for a-
I was just making sure, because it wasn't on the memorandum, I just wanted to make sure that they got that clear guidance from us. Thank you.
Right. It says all general fund travel.
I am nearly certain it doesn't include our line item.
Okay. And moving forward, I'll add a narrative that clarifies that we'll put board travel as a potential reduction. Of course, if board members change their minds, we can amend that.
It actually does include the board's travel as well. It's just in that one object code across the entire general fund.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Any other clarifications? Yes? Member Lessons?
So this is a great example of me having to leave my values at the door. But, and I asked this question on the last Saturday session, but just to the staff member I was speaking to, kindergarten TAs are an amazing resource. However, I think that they're categorized as people support and not as instruction. They are instruction. Okay. Well, it occurred to me that we may be able to eliminate kindergarten TAs and redirect, in a cost-neutral way, those funds towards additional kindergarten teachers so as to walk back some of this current year's increase in the kindergarten PTR plus one. It's an option that occurred to me. I don't know if it has value to other board members, but it would be, it would allow us, without any change in overall cost, to chip away at the PTR issue with our very youngest learners. But of course, it wouldn't, eliminating all the TAs wouldn't allow for another, the equivalent number of kindergarten teachers.
So you suggest, in your scenario, we get rid of TAs?
It would be getting rid of the kindergarten TAs, and then you get maybe 20 or so kindergarten teachers, I think.
Who are absolutely burnt out and unable to do the job. I think we have got to think beyond the dollars and look at the human capacity to be able to do what we need to have people do. And so I agree, it's a scenario, but I think the impact of that, I would want to hear from the administration. I mean, I think if our goal is, is the board directive to the superintendent is to increase the PTR in K3, he will decide how to do it and bring that back to us. And if we, yeah, and so, because there are impacts to all of that. And so systemically, if we're going to get rid of TAs, kindergarten TAs, oh my gosh, it's huge. And so the potential impact of that would be, to me, from my experience, devastating. But Dr. Bryant?
Madam President, to Member Lessons, I do want to validate a lot of the concerns expressed by our teachers that are teaching assistants play a critical role in being an additional adult in the classroom that can assist in a number of ways. So I think a wholesale elimination of a particular role would merit deliberation both at this table and also with our stakeholders. That's not something that we'd want to do lightly. And then, of course, the equivalent number of teachers would be about 20, and that would add another layer as to where would those 20 kindergarten teachers go? And it creates a cascade of different decision points that we wouldn't want to make lightly.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think, again, you know, I really do appreciate the discussion, the sharing. So I think with our discussion today, we've given the superintendent some more direction and potential guidance to come back with something different that incorporates some of what we've talked about today. And so with that, we are, oh, did you have another question? Kelly, did you have one more thing?
As long as I'm throwing spaghetti on the wall. So one of the things that I thought for a long time is that, again, to align our resources with instruction, one of those resources is our educators' time and energy. And I don't know where the money would come from, but if you could increase the noon duty pay and make that job more desirable, I think it would offload some of the pressure that our, and the staffing shortages that we may be having there, and allow teachers to focus on teaching rather than additional bouts of duty. And I don't know if, I mean, I threw the number $1 million out there. I don't know if that's the right number for overall noon duty. I would leave that to the administration's discretion. But I think if you're thinking about little levers that you could pull, increasing the noon duty pay to decrease the ask of our educators and allow them to focus on instruction is something that I would be interested in exploring.
Thank you. Right, I think everyone has had an opportunity to speak. I will now accept, and I want to thank the administration for being here as a resource for us today, and thank you for the beginning discussion. So at this point, I accept a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of contracts.
Madam President, I move to return to executive session for the purpose of legal updates, negotiations, and contracts. Second.
Moved in second. Any opposition to the motion? Seeing, hearing none, we are moving into executive session.
Do you need for executive session, or?
Do I have your?
Yeah, you have.
Okay. I don't, but don't go far. Oh, that's yours. I'll text you if I need you.
All right.
All right, guys. Whenever you're ready. I know.